Thank you, Deb. I will call this meeting to order, this work session. And board members are present. Thank you, board members. I want to welcome guests that we have with us today as we look at our school improvement plans. And I will turn this over to... Is Ted here yet?
I don't see him.
Okay.
And I don't see Dr. Herndon.
You don't see Dr. Herndon?
I don't see him in the panelist list.
All right.
Do you want to have Steve start since he was here? Or how do you want to do it?
Um. Hmm.
The reason I ask is it's going to take a minute to download the presentation. So whatever we're doing, I just need to...
Hi, Ty. This is Veronica. So I just had a message saying that Flip is not able to sign into the link.
Okay. Um.
I will resend it to him.
Okay. Thank you. Let's wait until we get Flip on board before we start. I will, uh, express the concern that we express every time. Maybe I'm preempting Dave on this one, but we, as far as I know, did not get any evaluation of last year's school improvement plans or any data on where we ended up at the end of the year with their proposals. And once again, that leaves us in an awkward place of not really knowing what's working and what isn't working. So I just put that out there again, that somehow we've got to include that in the future. Unless I've missed something and we have included it. As far as I can tell, we keep getting the new plans and not the evaluation of the former plan. Is that, is that what the other board members are seeing also?
I agree.
Okay. And so I'm wondering, Deb, if we put where we have the school improvement plans on the agenda for next year, if we could also add that that should be the evaluation of the year before as well as the presentation of the new one?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, do we see Flip yet? Nope. Anybody got a joke? Sorry.
I have a Halloween joke. Why are ghosts bad liars?
Because you can see right through them.
Exactly.
Tenisha, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. I have something that might be funny that I could share with everyone.
Well, now that Deb's given that funny, see if you can top it.
Well, my funny is, it's not a joke, but we have some kids who can't pronounce my name. So sometimes we say Ms. F, but they call me Ms. Fun Stuff.
Oh, Ms. Fun Stuff. I like that. That's very good.
But they're trying to say Framstad, but it comes out as Fun Stuff. So they go with it.
Yeah, it could be much worse.
Yes, so there's a smile for the day.
Yes, thank you for that. You can imagine what they do to Bowler Jack.
Oh.
It's always lumberjack.
Flip is on.
Okay, welcome, Flip.
Good evening.
It was not our intent to block you out. So I was asking, Flip, is there any particular process that you wanted to suggest for the, these presentations tonight?
No, I think we can, we can just go in alphabetical order. We can start with Cascade View and then, so the principals should be doing a presentation about 12 to 15 minutes. And then that gives an opportunity for, for directors to ask questions and, and we'll take that in to account. And we'll have secondary presentations later, one on Saturday, and then one, we'll figure out when to schedule in there.
Great. Thank you. So principal Fun Stuff. What, uh, what can you bring to us tonight?
Um, so my presentation, I guess what we'll, we'll just only need to pull up the, that one. And the other documents, if we need to go through them, I can go through them. So first, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Herndon and Board of Directors, for having me this evening to talk about Cascade View Elementary School Improvement Plan. I tried to stick to what we typically do and I'll add a couple of other things. And of course, see if there are any questions that we have for follow-up. And so we'll go to the very next slide. So our celebration slide is pretty full this year, and I think it's important to recognize a few things. The very first thing is our anchored sale for building adult social and emotional fluency in education, increasing emotional intelligence to support student success. At Cascade View, last year, we started having some trainings on adult social emotional with Dr. Brooks. And we're continuing those trainings this year. And this is something that I know the staff has spoke to and spoken and looked at, and how do we support adults during this time? So we're excited to go through the work. We're looking at self-awareness right now. And so we're supporting them, therefore we can support the students. This is also in my PD plan. I believe we meet with her four Smart Wednesdays this year for the hour. Another celebration is our partnerships and our enrichments that we have at CD. The IRC program, which officially started today, Robotics, which Ms. Christie Johnson is there as well as Director Larson. The kids are excited about that, the partnership with Sound Discipline, as well as Team Read and Communities in School. So we're super excited about being able to support our kids in multiple areas and ways. Another celebration is supplies for our students. So last year, on the first day of school, when they returned on April 1st, we were able to provide supplies for each and every one of our students that they could either take home or leave in the classroom. This year, we also did the same thing where kids are able to have the supplies they need in the buildings, whether it's rulers, pens, pencils, pencil sharpeners, and we're super excited about that. We were able to start this last year through some partnerships with the community as well as some additional funding. Uh, next, another celebration is how to reverse racism, moving beyond not racist, anti-racist. This was a professional development that kind of came about because of COVID. There are some individuals that I became aware of that are located in Texas, and this is our expertise, Dr. Hotchkins and Ms. Hotchkins. And this is what they do, and they work with school districts and they work with police departments and fire departments and communities to, to look at how to reverse racism. And so we were able to go through their four modules as a staff. And the goal is to continue with some of that work this year with them. But this was important because it gave us an opportunity to have some reflective conversations, and we did it all over Zoom. And without us being in that modality, we probably would not have had access to this training. So that is a celebration because it does support what we're doing for our Race and Equity team. Another celebration is our Targeted Three Assistance Grant. When I put this presentation together, I was simply going to say we applied for it. Hopefully we get it. I got notification today that we got it. This will be our fourth year in a row, and I am excited. So right now, we are approved for $35,000. There's a possibility we may receive more grant funding, and that will be due to any dispersal of additional funds. Our goal at Cascade View is to use it for before and after school. So my interventionists, Ms. B and Ms. W and I, we talked about it a couple of weeks ago. We're meeting again this Friday, and we're looking at how do we implement that? We know that robust intervention is important, and we also know that our master schedule doesn't always support that time, right? Because we got to do all the other things. So we will be using this funding to support that work with our students in literacy and in math. Another celebration goes to our PTO. At Cascade View, we do not have a PTA, but a PTO, our parents do not have to pay any fees or dues. We had our very first meeting and it was a nice, 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 amazing turnout. We thank Ms. Birdsong. She came and talked to the parents as well in regards of what would they like to see with funding and their suggestions and feedback. We are excited about the gathering and the feedback and building even more community engagement with parents. It was in person. It was not on Zoom. So to have the families come in and meet with us and sit down was great. So our PTO this year is going to be ran by Ms. Ray, Ms. McLean, and Ms. Li Aliaga, who was the president. And I give them a kudos and a round of applause for their planning and, you know, the communication and getting it out there and having some great ideas to engage our community and our families. So we're looking forward to our events and all the meetings and the things that we will have. Another celebration is at CD, the communication that we send to families. We use an online source for that, and it has the ability to translate up to 100-plus languages. And we believe that's super important because at CD, over the last few years, we've been the highest for ELO. I think last numbers that I received were at 63% of our students are ELO, and it may be higher. And so for us to be able to send communication home to families for them to have in their home language, we believe is a celebration. We do send home monthly newsletters, and Ms. Meyer, our office manager, sends home weekly updates for things to support families for things that are coming up. So for example, notifying our families that, you know, there's early releases or that there is no school this Thursday for a celebration of Veterans Day. And then last but not least, one of the big celebrations, looking at our CEE data. I pulled out some very specific strands because, you know, communication and collaboration are, been areas at CD that have had some, some struggles and needed some next steps, right, in all transparency. So looking at the data for these specific strands and seeing that families have reported that they have seen collaboration and communication under those direct strands. Not saying everything is perfect. I would love for everything to be 1,000%, but being able to see that parents do see that our school engages in difficult conversations about race, gender, oppression, discrimination. We're really huge in celebrations. So that is our celebration slide. And I'm kind of looking at my time. I have a timer going on, so I want to make sure I stay where I need to be. Our next slide is our area of focus. I did not include the WISA framework because a WISA framework, as we know, it is the three years of data. And since we didn't have testing last year, nothing moved. So what I'm going to do is talk a little bit about what we're looking at. So of course, strategic direction goal one, a strategic direction goal two. One is about the culture and climate. And what we're looking at for that, for CD, will be our Race and Equity team, which we have a separate team outside of the district team, looking at our ruler implementation, which we're getting support from Sound Discipline in doing that. Self for the learning community, as I shared in one of the celebrations, we are definitely doing that already with our adults. And then making sure we're increasing our support for students, whether it's through the modeling, the teaching, the reteaching, and the SCL skills, which will come with the ruler implementation. For this, this is important because there's, as we know, kids are coming back, they're transitioning into buildings. We recently had some more families that have come back that were, whether they were in online schools or they had moved out of state. And so just getting that community back together and making sure that we know we're there and we're caring and we're supportive is huge. I know the staff have a heart for the kids and they care for the kids. And so we're really digging into that work because if we don't have that work, it's going to be hard to move into the academic conversations that we need to have. So looking at the goal two of the strategic direction, the people that are heavily involved in this this year will be a leadership team, PLCs, family engagement, care team, supporting, and also supporting instructional practices. So one way we're looking at the engagement for the leadership team is the Race and Equity Toolkit. We actually were able to use it as we determined our assessment dates. That was the first time the leadership team had actually walked through the district's Race and Equity Toolkit. So therefore, we can make sure that when we planned our assessment dates for the SBA for fourth and fifth grade, that we were looking and using a lens and the perspective that we needed to do. So we will continue to implement that for PLCs. PLCs are by grade level most of the time, and our PLCs do meet regularly during the Smart Wednesdays. They typically get one Smart Wednesday, and the other Smart Wednesday is when we either do our training, as you can see in the PD, for assessment, or if it's the SCL or Race and Equity. We also sometimes give PLC time if we have a staff meeting and there's something that I've given them all the nuts and bolts of the Cougar conversations that PLCs can break off. Usually at the beginning of the year and maybe towards the end of the year, we go from grade level to grade band. That allows K1, 2, 3, 4, 5 to meet, whether it's to look at, you know, students that are moving, right, transitioning up to the next grade level, or what supports, or what's needed, or what's happening, or where they were in a unit. So we typically do that maybe at the beginning and the ending of the year, but throughout the year, they're typically in their grade level teams. So our PLCs, so in that time, they're looking at curriculum instruction, they're looking at their lesson planning, they're looking at all the different things that happen during the day. Of course, our care team, you know, with our early warning indicator system, right, supporting students, what do they need? You know, what other supports can be there? The care team is comprised of interventionists as well as teachers and social worker and other supports that are there. And then, of course, we'll continue to support instructional practices with our walkthroughs, looking at, you know, what's going on with curriculum, what resources, what supports are needed, and all of the other things that we're implementing with ruler and our cell. Something else that I thought was really important for the area of focus is on the CEE data under the effective teaching, peer observation, coaching, and feedback is a tool we use to improve instruction. That's exactly what's written on there. And I pulled this data out because 57% of the staff at CD say it's seldom true or almost never true. And I think this is an important area of focus because the teachers want to be able to have the peer-to-peer time. And usually during the day, they're teaching at the same time as their peers. And so the question is, what does that look like and how do we support it? And I have something coming up in my next slide in supporting needs. Thank you so much. So when I look at supporting needs, some of the things that I think are really important to families and to staff and even students, when we talk about things, because you get there in the morning and kids sometime are there early, is before and after care for families. What does that look like? How do we support our families when our families are going back to work, right? They're transitioning back into work or when something arises. So what does that look like? Also, increased academic intervention time, as we know, we have our schedule, and we talk about robust intervention. But how do we support that? And what does that look like in a day to make sure we are giving the kids what they need? Because currently, right now, the students, if they need support in reading and math, right, for intervention time, they may get selected for reading and not necessarily math in the same way. And so the next year, they get math, but then they still may need reading. And so this year, one of the things that is happening, we do have a push-in model at CD where ESPs and interventionists are pushing in during the school day as well. But we also know we have a dedicated block, which also can be pushed in time, but can be pulled out. So looking at what does that increase academic intervention time look like? Another area is recess, lunch, and transition support, right? Kids, we always need support. We always need more eyes. We always need more everything to support. And it's not necessarily behavior management. It could just simply be just having the social and emotional to support. Sometimes kids just need to have a conversation. Social and emotional support staff, currently at the elementaries, we have one social worker. So what does it look like if we had two social workers? Or maybe if we had a social worker and a counselor to support? When we think about the front office at the elementary, we have a principal, we have an office manager, and we have a secretary. And so that comprises of the front office, and then we also have the social worker. But when we think about what the front office looks like, who else can we have to also support students? Because sometimes it's not a behavior thing. Maybe the kid just needs to share something and get back to class. We realize that we have things like exclusion when we look at the laws, and we want the kids to get back as soon as possible. But we also want to make sure that we're supporting the teacher, the classroom, the student. And so what does that additional support look like? Support needs recruitment of substitutes. As we all know, we're all aware, there's a shortage of substitutes. But something that could help, when I think about the data of the 57% of staff that would love to have that peer interaction or observation time is we had some more substitutes. They could possibly support the roles as floaters. So maybe people can go in and see the work of their peers or maybe the next grade level to see like what kids are going to be doing when they move up or what the expectation is when they're coming up from below. So what does that look like for maybe having more substitutes to support the learning? Another need would be academic coaches to support teachers in literacy, mathematics, and ELO. Once again, back to that peer observation, the coach's job would be there to help to coach, to support. As principals, we are the instructional leaders. And currently with the model we have at the elementary, we can't get into maybe all 35 classrooms, right, in the day. We may be able to truly get into four or five classrooms for a good period of time when we think about supporting lunches and recess. But then having those coaches that could also support for them to have the peer-to-peer observations. And this wouldn't be like the coaches are by themselves. This would all be in a model of a partnership with the principal, with the teacher, or the grade level PLC, or even the grade band, right? And so I would envision the conversations that would take place to say like, this is our look for, this is what we're doing, you know, looking heavily into our I-ready data, which we know that is where we are focused at right now and to pull us. So let's look at our students that are currently showing up in red. How do we move them to yellow? And our kids that are in yellow, how do we move them to green? And if we have kids that were in the green tier, how do we get them to not slip back to the yellow, right? Also even supporting the academics, coaches, supporting the work of the highly capable students, right? Because we don't want to just think about our students that are at standard or right below standard, but what are our students that want to continually be challenging? How do we support them in their learning and their growth? And then the next couple of things is, it's about time, right? Time for staff to work together in their PLCs. We know currently we do have a model with Smart Wednesdays, and I think we moved to 18. But when we look at the time adjustments and the things like the time for them to really dig into the work. I know staff enjoy spending time with one another. I know they enjoy having that time set aside where they can just focus on the work. So what does that time look like in supporting them for their PLC work? Also continual instructional support time is making sure that if they need something for instruction, if a staff member says, hey, I really want to dig into this Reader's Workshop model a little bit more, even though we're implementing it. I want to see how maybe third grade does it, right, as a second grade teacher. So therefore, when my kids move up, I can support that. What does that support time look like? And then last but not least, assistant principals at the elementary level. As I mentioned, in our front office currently, we have principal, office manager, and a secretary. And there are times where maybe the secretary or office manager are both are not there, which in the principal's in the building. If there is something that arises, such as maybe a student needs to have that conversation or there needs to be lunch or recess support, the principal can only be at one place, but maybe needed in three. And so what does that balance look like to make sure all of our teachers have the resources and the support they need? Also looking at making sure that we can be where we need to be, right? We know at arrival with this missile, those are important times. We want to greet our students in the morning. We want to see them. We want to have a smile on their faces. We want to make sure we're supporting all our healthy and safe guidelines. And then at dismissal, we want to make sure they're safe and they're getting home. So just thinking about what, what it looks like to continually just have the support in general when I think about our support needs at the elementary level, even at Cascade View. And I believe that all of this falls into a model of it's a team, right? So it's not that it would be just this person, this person, this person, but we're all sitting down as a team. That would be my vision, whether it was with the coach or an additional social emotional support staff and even our substitutes, right, for them to be aware of our culture and climate and supporting our kids and what those next steps look like. So I think I'm close to my time. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to try to present within the 15 minutes and stay within that. And I don't know if there are any questions or anything, but thank you so much.
I just have a comment. Thank you. Great work. And I always appreciate how you connect the work that's happening at the building level to our district goals that we have.
Thank you, our provider, Dr. Apple Rider. I get it out.
Tenisha, did you touch on goal three or four?
I did not touch on goal three or four in this presentation. So when I think about those goals, for example, for, I know for hiring, when I get the opportunity from HR to add staff, definitely go through the process to support. We make sure that we are, you know, we have our team that meets the criteria of the Race and Equity, and we make sure we're looking for best supports for students. I know at Cascade View, we are currently full. So we are, we're able to hire additional staff to support, making sure our classrooms would be at the, I believe, a 17 or below. And so when those things happen, we do follow those next steps. And of course, I follow the guidance and protocols of the district for that one.
I'm curious, did you, are there any needs in terms of curriculum? Do you feel like, you know, what we have in place is a solid curriculum, or do we need some improvements in that area?
So the one thing that I know Mr. Howard has spoken to with us about is that Curriculum Council wasn't going to add anything new. So what we've been doing is really just digging into what we have. And so the Reader's Writers Workshop is where we are. I do, you know, when I think about all curriculum, I do think we, there's a need for change in curriculum, right? We want our kids to be represented and for them to see themselves, right? We want to see the differences with race and equity. We want to see the inclusion and all the different things. So when it comes to that, yes, there's always a need. But what we have right now, I think we're digging into that work. I do know that we do need to look at our science curriculum some more and even maybe looking a little bit at our math. But I think if teachers were to ask about a curriculum, I know science is a big one. You may have also heard about the science kits. We're currently using Mystery Science at Cascade View. But I do think science is one of the areas to look at, because I know we have the workshops curriculum for a while. But, you know, when we think about curriculum and what our kids see and what reflects their lives and their next steps, there's always, I believe, room to grow for everyone, including myself. But science would probably be one that is really big on the list.
I think a couple of the questions that I would ask. I'd loved hearing about your PD that you've done so far on SCL and anti-racist work. I would love to have the time for you to describe to us some of the changes you've already seen in people and in practice. But I don't think we have time for that. But sometime when, when you and I are together, you can, you can tell me those things. What I do want to ask, though, do you not have a communities and schools person on campus?
So we do. We just got a new one.
Oh, okay.
Esther did leave, so we do have a new person that is starting, and him and I will be having meetings the way Ms. Esther and I did. So yes, we do have that position that has now been filled since she left.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Nope, you're welcome.
Great presentation. Any other questions from folks? All right, Ms. Fun Stuff, you have, I'm not going to be able to say your name ever again. Always going to be Fun Stuff.
Thank you.
Principal Framstad, thank you so much. And if we're going in alphabetical order, where are we?
Thorne Dyke would be next.
Oh, we're at Thorne Dyke. All right. Let's hear about how it's going at Thorne Dyke.
Hello, everyone. Sorry about my throat. And I just getting, I'm just getting over a cold, so excuse me if I'm not being very clear. And you can just ask me to repeat if you need. Okay, so can you go to the second slide, Deborah? Great, thank you. So the reading goals for this year are focused on I-Ready and our formative assessment, Countess and Pennell Benchmark Assessment Systems. We had a training this summer. It was really exciting because when I came to Thorne Dyke, we were not implementing enough formative assessments. And the Benchmark Assessment System is an opportunity for the student to read a small passage to their teacher. And their teacher will record miscues, self-corrections, any, they ask reading comprehension questions and record their answer. And their fluency is measured, not just by like timing the student, but also by listening to them read to know if they're reading for meaning. And then also, you know, they will record if a student misses a word repeatedly. They're not like marked down every time they miss the same word, but it's noted. And the purpose of that is to help get to know the reader better and then determine proper small group things, like flexible groupings and reading interventions that would support that child to grow. And we are seeing some improvement in our data as measured by I-Ready. That's really all we have to compare to because of the pandemic. The ESPA data, we don't have that new data yet, even though we did implement the assessment this fall. And so the, the ESPA goal is really just the same as it was in 1920. And then the growth goal is very much the same. And then Deborah, if you can skip to the math goals now, I'll go over that quickly too. I should point out that we all agreed at Thorndike to really focus on closing the gap in reading because we believe that if students are able to read, then they're going to be able to read a story problem in math, for example, or the directions for an investigation in science. And not that we don't want to close a gap in math or science or any of those other areas, but we feel that that's an important foundation for all students to have. And so the goals in math are very much the same as they were in 2019, 2020, except we're measuring a little bit differently by looking at the student's progress towards typical growth and trying to move that needle. And then, Deborah, you can skip slide number four. That's our data from 1819 and 1718. I don't think we need to look at that. And that's our vision, currently our vision, which we will be working on revising as we develop this year. The Thorndike family is a diverse learning community, working together towards academic and personal excellence. And I'd like to move on to celebrations. As I mentioned, we're focusing on closing the gap in reading, and we saw some... And we saw some progress as measured by I Ready. Um, we, our annual typical growth in reading proficiency increased from forty percent to forty nine percent between two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty school year and the fall two thousand twenty one. And that's as measured by I Ready. Um, and I think this was very much because we focused on closing the gap in reading and all the teachers nested their student growth goals with my student growth, growth goals that are focused on reading. We also, another celebration is we started our MTSS work. Um, we have a data MTSS team. We've created spreadsheets um, at each grade level. So every teacher enters important data such as um, the student's reading level as measured by the benchmark assessment system. So that would be level A to Z, A being a um, kindergarten reader at the beginning of the year. And Z would be like any of us, we would read at a Z level. Um, and then they would also enter their I Ready Fall score. Um, and then they're both reading in math and any um, ma- math classroom based assessments. And then um, the teachers meet with the intervention teachers to determine appropriate interventions. And I've met with Eric Bowles at the Center for Education Excellence. Um, and he is planning to do data literacy trainings with our um, MTSS and data team. Another celebration is we successfully, successfully integrated the LRC two program that moved from Chukwila Elementary. Um, and already we have inclusionary practices being implemented. And um, we are continuing to promote the expansion of the inclusion. Um, we've got um, all of those students attending specialists. So that's Matt, I'm sorry, that's PE, Steam Lab, Library and Music. Um, and then we also have uh, students, certain students, when the LRC two, two teacher feels the student is ready. They're going into the Gen Ed class for certain subject areas that the teacher feels that they would um, be able to um, succeed in the Gen Ed setting, so they're around um, their peers. And you can move to the next slide, Deborah. So in the fall of two thousand nineteen, working with the Lynn Team, the Learning Improvement Network, we um, developed a a theory of action to reduce our chronic absenteeism. So we picked fifteen students with the highest number of absences. And each one of those students was partnered with a, an adult in the building who gave that um, student, after getting to know the adult, um, and working with the teacher of the student, a job that was a meaningful job in our building, that really was something that would help. What um, for example, a job in the lunchroom would have been to help serve milk. Um, a job in the front office was to help with um, answering phones and um, delivering things. Uh, there was a student who worked in a kind, a fifth grader who worked in a kindergarten classroom, and that kid was adored by those kids. And his um, his attendance started to improve drastically. We saw a tremendous improvement in attendance and we, our connections team this year will be implementing that strategy um, to improve attendance for our most chronic absent student, chronically absent students. And then our ruler implementation team, um, we did a, an all day training this summer. Um, and we rolled out the staff, ruler staff charter at the beginning of the year. And we have our staff char- charter now, and we are going to be presenting the final version of it at our staff meeting on the seventeenth. And we'll move in from there to having, s- some teachers have already done the classroom charter, but we'll move into having all of the teachers an expectation that they complete the classroom charter. And hence January is an excellent time to revisit classroom expectations. So we'll ask for that to be completed by like the second week of January and ask the teachers to send us photos, which we will share with the um, the team. And then we're going to be moving into emotions matter and the mood meter. Um, and so that we feel like we've gotten really off to a good start in ruler implementation. We continue our partnership with Sound Discipline. Um, and we're, we have, we started out working on building resiliency, staff resiliency. Um, for staff who are working with students exposed to trauma. And we did a little bit of work with classroom communities and using class meetings as a restorative practice and then other restorative practices. We're going to continue that work this year as part of our professional development plan. So we have a very strong relationship with Sound Discipline and that's um, thriving. And in terms of areas of focus, um, we're continuing our work to close the achievement gap for African American males. Um, we're working to reduce the number of discipline referrals. Uh, this was something I shared with the board on, uh, in two thousand, fall of two thousand nineteen. Um, and um, we're really focusing on safety on the playground. Because when I came to Thorndike, there was a, an alarmingly large number of referrals from the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year that were related to physical aggression on the playground. And so we're really working to teach students how to um, use their words to solve problems and doing this through restorative practices. So if a student, if students are sent off the playground to come and speak with me, it's always a restorative conversation between the two students where they problem solve together and think about what they could, what they could do differently next time and um, improve their nonviolent communication. Um, and then also settling the problem there that they had. Um, and so that, that is, we're seeing progress in that area already with our safety on the playground and the reduction in discipline referrals related to safety on the playground is, has been very much something to celebrate. So um, before I became the principal at Thorndike, I was a social emotional discipline case manager for the Seattle School District. And um, I worked with high need students um, who had presenting challenging behaviors. And um, I worked with David Lewis, um, who's kind of like a social emotional learning guru. Um, and he created a positive behavior intervention plan that is for Gen Ed students. I asked him for permission to bring that to the Taquilla School District. And we are using that at Thorndike and it's been very positive. It means gathering with all the people who know that student who's struggling with positive learning behaviors. Um, and we develop a plan by looking at that student's strengths. Um, looking at um, their history, their experience as a child in school um, and getting to know them very well and getting, building a relationship with the family. And it's really like a wraparound meeting where our social worker is involved, our communities and schools person is involved. Um, our sp- uh, behavior specialists are involved. And we create a plan based on the student's strengths and interventions that we've tried so far that will help support that student um, to uh, present more learning behaviors. And um, being, so for example, if a child's struggling with emotional regulation, we'll focus on teaching skills that help them regulate. Um, and then we'll also um, focus on things that um, provide incentives for a student to do well and always communication with everybody. Um, so that has been very successful. And um, then we are working to increase trust at Thorndike by focusing on activities that build community in our learning environment. We've been doing a tradition called the Thorndike Huddle, and we gather in the foyer. And um, it's sometimes led by me, sometimes it's led by um, a teacher. And there are words of encouragement provided and shout outs um, are shared. So if someone noticed somebody going an extra mile, being there for a child, being there for a teacher who's struggling, um, that's brought to everyone's attention. Um, and I mentioned the ruler staff charter and any other activities that promote collaboration among staff. Both our ruler team, our leadership team, our race and equity team, and our PBIS team would all um, gather together on these kinds of ideas. And our um, events and sunshine team meet to pl- plan those types of events that will um, promote collaboration. So um, in terms of uh, needs, um, there are a lot of what Ms. Friends Dad spoke to, um, I am going to be repeating. Um, so more professional development time to support equity and anti racist practices, data list literacy and SEL. That's what we're working on this year. That's our focus for PD. We just need more time, more PD time. Um, and then um, special education training for our general education teachers as they take a, a primary role in supporting our special education students, um, especially around modifications and accommodations, data collection, inclusionary practices and serving students on the spectrum. Um, I think that uh, our whole district would benefit from having um, a self-contained behavior program. We're seeing a lot of students coming into our district. Um, and I think Tanisha and I have talked about this and Steve and I. Um, students coming into the district who might have an IEP that indicates self-contained. But we don't have self-contained behavior program. Um, and it does mean sometimes out of district placements. And um, I know it probably is something that won't happen immediately, um, because it's a big project. But I do think our district would um, benefit from having a program in the district. So we could serve students who live in our district and have um, an IEP that is cer- is focused on um, social, emotional and behavior goals. And I agree with Ms. Friends Dad, assistant principals at each elementary building would really be helpful to support our efforts in closing the opportunity gap. Um, like Ms. Friends Dad said, being in three places at one time is never going to mean equality. It's not going to mean quality. It's just going to mean delegating thing, I mean, it's important to delegate, we're a team. But it means um, getting spread thin and um, the instructional leadership part of our job is so important. Being in class, presence in classroom, present in classrooms more often is only going to happen if we've got support from another building leader who can do um, support teachers' growth. So do evaluations, can help with discipline and restorative practices and can help with daily duties, like Ms. Friends Dad was saying. The morning arrivals is such an important time to connect with students and do morning check-ins with students and then be there for parents. Um, when they, when they need and it's really, um, I think it would, it's hard to run a, a school when the front office has an office manager and attendance secretary and a principal. Um, it's been very helpful having our family liaisons. Um, in our, our family liaisons are in our front office now, and that has been helpful. But they're very busy with families all over the district as they should be. Um, I think that concludes my presentation. Um, do you have any questions?
Oh, so does anybody have a question?
Yeah, I just, I'll just say, so the, the theme of everybody, I'm sure it's going to continue, is more time in adults. I mean, that's, that's something we're working on, I work on with the state all the time. And so um, appreciate um, all that. Um, that's an ongoing issue. So the question I had was related to, so you have the growth related to or the goals related to typical growth. And what I'm wondering is, so I ready has two types of growth, typical growth and stretch growth. And given that I think we have a lot of students that are, you know, more than two or more grade levels behind. Um, I'm wondering what you think about, you know, having goals related to stretch growth. Because ultimately, in order for them to catch up, typical growth is just one year worth of, uh, and they'll never catch up if that thing. So I'm just curious about your thoughts about that.
I think we do need to have a stretch goal too. I think it's really important because we're never going to be able to close the gap if we don't add that. Um, and that's something that I want to work with Eric Bowles and our data team. And my uh, principal intern, Ms. Nurr, who's now a reading intervention teacher. Um, and she's present here today. I don't know if she'll, she'll be allowed to say anything to add to it. But um, we also are trying to move towards a push-in model. And because when I came to Thorndike, it's more pullout. But Ms. Nurr and I are very inspired about pushing. It's just going to be a big uh, change in culture for our building. But yes, stretch goal is definitely something we need to work on and we'll be doing that with our data, our data team.
Okay, thanks.
Once again, I think this is a very thoughtful um, complete presentation. I appreciate what you're uh, offering us and the leadership you're giving. Um, I would love to see some copies of your ruler charters when they come together. I'd love to see what the teachers are, are covenenting and, and how that's coming together. And then when the um, whatever you said was the next step up. Anyway, the classrooms, right?
Yeah, the, yes, the classroom charters are the next step. And actually, we have, so we did a survey recently um, to see where everybody is on the spectrum. Um, what they want to work on next, what they're, um, how far they've gotten. Because we invited all of our teachers to do the classroom charter and five teachers have done it. So um, but we'll have everybody on board, I would say, I'm hoping. Ninety percent of our teachers will be done in the second week of January, and I'd be happy to forward the board or just you, if you prefer all of the pictures of the classroom charter.
Yeah, or, or just let us know when they're up and we can come in and tour.
That's even better. I would love to have you visit our school. And I will reach out to you and let you know when they're up. And um, and when we're moving into, we're going to uh, move into emotions matter and the mood meter. They're very much connected. We'll be doing that um, next. And, and that will start in December and January.
Thank you. Thomas, what is the percentage of English language learners you have at your school?
Oh my gosh, it's a hundred and eighty-five kids. So, and we've got four hundred and hang on.
Got my calculator ready.
Almost fifty percent.
Okay, thank you. Um, what's going to happen with the, the mascot? I'm curious about that this year.
Oh yeah, okay. So our ra- race and equity team, um, leaders, Courtney Martinez and um, Kyla Crawford were planning to re- reach out to the Duamish and ask for their permission to keep the Thunderbird as our mascar- mascot. With also an offer, if that's not something you want uh, to grace us with, we will find a different name. And we're waiting to hear back from them.
Okay, thank you.
Isn't it true that the Duamish can't make that decision?
So the, the way the bill's written, and I mean, I'm, we only have ten more minutes in this meeting. So I, I'm welcome a follow-up conversation. Um, the bill is written for the federally recognized
Right.
tribe, which is Muckleshoot, correct? And at the same time, we also have to honor our other tribe that hasn't re- been recognized. So I think, I think both might be important, but I just was wondering, because the deadline is the end of the year to ask for permission. And that's going to go by real quick. To ask for permission and that's gonna go by real quick. And if it doesn't happen, then there needs to be a backup plan too. So I was just curious what the game plan was gonna be. Cause it's happening this year, right? This all is gonna happen this year too.
Thank you, Bridget, for, for bringing that clarity and for, for uh Thorndike for working on it. All right, any other questions for Thorndike Thunderbirds at this point? All right, well, let's hear what's going on at Tuck Willa.
All right, thank you very much, uh, school board superintendent. Thank you very much for having us tonight. I see the, the time is running, so I'm gonna look at my um. Sit uh goals and look at the reading proficiency and growth. That's uh obviously one of our s- our areas of, of most growth that we've got to get this year. By June uh twenty twenty-two, I already reading scores won things by eight percent for students one point five years or more. Behind in reading and six percent for all the other students. Some focus groups you got, third grade students, PLLs and boys of color. What I'd like to say about that is um, yes, we've got eight percent, but. What the teachers have been noticing is that our students are coming back. And even though it seems like they've been gone for two years, in two months, that type of thing, is that. When you're finding out in, in September with the I-ready um. Paperwork and that kind of thing is that our kids are at the verge of growing like crazy. And the way I say that is because it is, is that our kids did pretty good. Taking in the material at distant learning. And when they're coming back, we're seeing that a, a quick hard review. Is, is, is what's a lot of the kids moving. They didn't move extended time with, uh, I'll just pick out some things, some, some, some um fractions of this or that. Uh, 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 in math and, and in reading um. Vocabulary and, and those types of things is that some strong review has really helped. Is really helping our kids to get going, to, to get that kickstart going and, and so we're waiting for um. Our next I-ready um. Assessment, but we're just finding in the classroom and, and the classroom assessments. The kids are just grabbing on and they're hungry and, and, and so this is what we're taking um. Um, this is what we're grabbing onto and we're just going with our um. Continued teaching with the teachers and, and, and they're not. Uh, uh, they just don't feel that our kids came, yeah, uh, came back as long as they do. And, and so as this year goes on and we really work with our kids. And um we've got Boys and Girls Club gonna be starting soon and, and, and that type of thing for an after-school program. We're looking at a zero hour program to grab the kids in the, like at eight o'clock to eight thirty. And so we're just looking at different ways to get our kids moving and, 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 uh, all right, I'll say it, proven. And so that w- we can get our kids going and, 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 and when they're in school, they're learning, you know, from, from eight o'clock to. Four thirty, five o'clock, once Boys and Girls Club starts, uh, starts. And so we're just looking to really push forward uh of what we have right now, what the kids are giving us. So that was um, uh, the reading and proficiency. I also w- will be continuing this year, the kid talk and started with um what last month. And now we're going into this one. Every month I get the um privilege of meeting with my, my certified staff. And my classified staff and where are they with my kids? And so um, for instance, uh, uh, the classified person I met with today, she's meeting with three kids. And she knows them by name and she knows exactly where they are in the uh curriculum and the program that she's got them going through. And so we just have our, 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 our staff. That when they come to me for a kid talk, man, they know the kids and they know what the kids need. And, and, and it's just step by step with these kids. So I got to tell you that. The staff that you have working here at Tuck Willa, and I know the other two buildings too. The, the staff that you got there, man, they're pumping it out and, and, and our kids are, are anxious. To learn and they're learning and so, yeah, we've got our bumps in the road for sure, but. And they're coming to school ready to go. And so I, I, I just want you to know that in, in the reading proficiency growth and, and just in, in the um. Areas that we're working with our kids here at school. The other one, um, math proficiency and growth, again, the, uh, the smart goal is, is about the same. Twenty twenty-two, by twenty twenty-two, I-ready math scores will increase by eight percent. For the students one point five years or more behind in math and six percent for all the other students. The focus groups here will be fifth grade students, PLLs and boys of color. Again, um, kid talk happens every month for all staff. We've got a maths school, after-school math support, we're working on that one, again with the Boys and Girls Club. And then now, uh, yeah. And then for the ELL progress. Fifty percent of our emergencies, of our emerging students will increase to a progressive level of fifty percent. Of progressive students will increase to a proficient level. I heard a, a, a question earlier about um, a number of PLLs, we have a Tuck. Uh, we're about a, a twenty-five percent. And then um real important one for us this year, June twenty twenty-two, school attendance will increase by five percent. And the uh twenty twenty-two discipline referrals will be pleased by fifteen percent currently. In the first, the two and a half months of school, uh, we have a decrease in the number of, of, of referrals. Coming from the playground and so we wanna continue with that um and. As those reports come in, I'll get you better data on that, but uh that's what we're seeing right now is, is. Less referrals coming from the playground and so that's very positive for us and we'll. Continue to monitor that as well. For um some celebrations, we've got um, here at Tuck. I, I tell you, our little kids especially, but all of our kids, they have surprised me with their willingness to. Wear the mask. Constantly uh wearing masks. They go out to the playground with the mask, they come back in with the mask still on. So um, yeah, they got it down. Their parents did a great job of coaching them before they came. And then here at school, of course, the staff is, is um, um, we're always um. Looking to make sure that everybody's wearing their mask and we have plenty of um masks available for them. Plenty of sanitizer for when they come in from the playground before and after lunch, so on and so forth. So we've got plenty of supplies there. Our PTA did a great job with uh Halloween trunk and treats. Uh, that was a couple of weekends ago and uh they did a great job. Uh, they, they had plenty of candy. If, 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 if you wanted candy, we had it and they did a good job getting that um passed out to our kids. Uh, we have a uh Veterans Day assembly that, well. Veterans Day um. Information going to our kids on, on Friday through the um. Through the uh daily um. News, T and N, and, and so we've got that going and so um. Kids will, you know, celebrate that on Friday. We at Tuck, we've got our charters going. Um, staff is uh. The goal was to have the charters up by the end of September and they did except for a couple and, and they're up now too. So we have our, our charters up so the kids uh can look at them every day. They go over them every day with the teacher. And it's, it's just part of the, a morning routines and so we're glad to get that going. Couple other steps uh that we have with our um charters. Now the charters are up. The classes are concentrating on, on the mood meter and those are up. Uh, our social worker made sure that every class had the opportunity to, to have a laminated uh mood meter. So they're up in the classrooms and then um one of my goals was to see that the um classrooms had. Um, scheduled and often uh class meetings. To, to go over their, their charter, to go over other incidences, other um things that come up, having to do with um. The um charters and, and doing. So I, I'm glad that the staff has really bought into that early on and now we'll have it all year long. Areas of focus, as, as mentioned, we have uh the rule implementation and getting that going. Uh, folks team ahead at Tuck. Uh, we have a strong building team for race and equity and they um. Take time during staff meetings and keep staff going as well with um. That toolkit and so we're looking to build that up as well. And then our PLC teams this year. Our grade level teams. Get some time during the month, each month and, and they are, are a building and that. For instance, we have times uh during the school year where each grade level will work with the grade below them. Fourth grade team will work with uh third grade team and then the, the next meeting or certainly thereafter. The fourth grade team will go with fifth grade team, so that our, our grade levels have the time, not much time, but um. Have the time to uh meet with the grades above and below them so that there's a curriculum, uh focused, there's a curriculum um. Level there so that they can see what's coming, what's um. What's going above them, what's coming down, um, that sort of thing. Kid talk, I've already mentioned that, but just the, the blessing I have. If you listen to my staff talking about each student in their classroom and, and especially after conferences. Each student in their uh classroom and what they've learned from their uh parents, um, what they continue to learn from their kids. And so um, that's some area of focus that we always have here at Tuck. Support needed. I would mention, as, as already been mentioned by my uh colleagues, is the uh subs. And it's, and, and the um. Nobody's fault, nobody, it's just tough to find them and so um I know people at district office are working hard on that. And we just continue to um meet the needs, obviously, as teachers are out. Not very many teachers have been out and it, that's been a blessing, but um when they are um. Obviously, we find a people to, to, uh, people within the staff to um, to meet that. And we'll continue to do that as well. Helping Boys and Girls, uh, support needed, helping Boys and Girls Club to staff them. Uh, so that we can start the program and we are doing that. We've got some of our staff here at Tuck. That are willing to uh step up and work on their team and I know Boys and Girls practice is um. Continuing to, to fill those spots as well. We're continuing here at Tuck to um. Trying to get our first CIS uh union schools staff for the year. Um, but I know they had a ton of them down there. Doing their staff positions as well. And I would uh go along with, with what's already been uh mentioned with um more time for adults. It would be really nice to um have more than um. One staff meeting a month. Get more time, work with our staffs, whether it be for PD or just uh things that come up. And uh so looking forward to uh helping with this group thing and. And even the P L elementary principals to find ways to um. Meet ways to help our adults to be as a leader. To have more time with them. With that, I uh, I conclude and uh, there are, there are any questions?
Thank you, Steve. Great presentation. Uh, folks, do we have any questions?
Not a question, when you, when you say um, I already reading scores will increase by a percent. What's, what are you talking about? Are you talking about students at grade level? Are you talking about typical growth? Are you talking about stretch growth?
Well, I'm talking about um. All the growth, any growth, that type of thing, the stretch growth. I think that's extremely important because then not just the kids, but the staff. Um, knows and realizes that we, we can't just stop at this level. We gotta keep going because we've got some catching up to do. Uh, I mean, as much as they came up and, and, and as much as they came into school. Higher than I thought, higher than we thought and, and, and the um, I mean, uh. Like I mentioned earlier, that amount of um. Review that um. I didn't, I mean, I thought they, they take long, but it's not. And so I think, uh, to answer your question, I think David's is, is to be able to uh. Is we're just, we're talking about. Normal growth, but at the same time, that stretch growth. Uh, that's a goal I'm using. If that answered the question.
Okay, so, so in this, in this particular goal, you're talking about stretch growth?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to um, kind of back you up on the, on the, the mask thing. I was, I was, I've been up at KSCU for quite a while doing the robotics program. I've, I've been amazed too that the, the students are just, I mean, there's no issues with masks. Everybody's wearing them and they keep them on and. And I was really, I was really kind of surprised when that, but I've also seen that. I think when I went down to our Tackel as well, just watching the students. I mean, it's, it's uh pretty amazing how, how um. You know, the good they are doing that. Which is great and it reflects, I think, in our recent COVID numbers with a big bunch of zeros, which I love to see whenever I go to the COVID page and I see zero, zero, zero. Um, that's great.
Other questions?
I would say, obviously, uh, if there are any additional questions people have on. The presentations after reflecting from tonight, you can feel free to send those in and we can certainly uh have principals follow up. Because I wanna make sure, you know, sometimes people need a little time to digest what's been presented and then be able to send in questions later. So I just wanna make sure all board directors know that they, you know, have that opportunity to send those in.
Thank you. I do, I do want to also say um. You talk about the changes that you're putting in place. I would love to hear stories of how those are being lived out. So if you have um, you know, examples of someone has changed their. Technique or their attitude or their abilities because of what PD you've done or what the work that the teachers have done with each other. I think that's really worth sharing, not, not on, you know, on a case-by-case basis with names, but just in general. Also, uh, the, the one question I wanna ask and this is, this is maybe naive, I'm not sure. The staff time question. Doesn't that also go to the union for negotiations? Isn't that something that they would work on to, to figure out how to get more staff? More time for the staff to have with each other and on PD and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, that's certainly part of it. The collective bargaining agreement usually goes through that. What I've seen in different districts is it comes down to kind of. Who um defines that time? So I think there's a, there's other time that teachers have for preparation and getting together. But principals usually only have a set amount of time that they get to kind of set the agendas and guide the meetings. So that's, I think, what most of the principals are referring to.
Okay, well, it sounded like they were also reflecting that teachers like time with each other and planning time, so, yeah.
All, all those things are true and they're all needed, quite honestly.
They are, they are. I agree. All right, well, we are over time, um, I really appreciate the time that you have taken to share these plans with us. I look forward to how they, we all look forward to how they are uh, rolled out and the effect that they have with our, our students and our staff. So keep telling us stories about this, principals, we love to hear what you're doing and what's working. And how the kids and the staff are responding, um, and we look forward to hearing from you more than just this one report a year. But anytime you have something to, to celebrate and to share with us. So, board, we will take a few minutes to uh, get ready for our six-thirty board meeting. And uh, thank you for all who participated here, we will adjourn, we don't need a motion to adjourn a work part, work session, do we? Or do we?
Uh, I think we probably should.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn this work session?
So moved, second.
All right, uh, board members, are we all approving of this? Say yes.
Yes.
All right, well, we will adjourn then and come back at six-thirty, thanks, everybody.
Thank you all, principals.
Thank you, principals.